Okay, so we just left the Board of Health and now we're back as a council. And we were continuing or planning on continuing the retreat from where we left off.
So the first agenda item on today is public comment on agenda items only.
So I have comments to start right away unless you have a presentation you'd like to make?
No, the first one, we just need to see if there's anybody online who wants to provide public testimony on agenda items.
This isn't the topic.
Yes, it looks like we do not have anyone in the room and I don't see any hands online either.
Super, okay.
There you go, okay. So the second agenda item was only a holdover if we didn't finish the topics on Monday, which we have. So we'll be on item number three, which is the policy overview and discussion with Jordan. So he'll just go over the different policy items, the status, and then of course add or subtract anything and based on council's feedback.
Okay, Jordan?
Thanks, council. Again, for the record, Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst, here to talk through this list of policy items and issues with you today. Just before I start, I just wanted to express appreciation for the opportunity to work with you all over the last five months. It has been an awesome learning experience. I've really appreciated jumping into all of this and I really appreciate the spirit of service that each of you brings to the county. So I just want to say thank you for that. I've got 24 or so items on this list. We probably could have had 24 individual policy items just under public health. And so what I'd like to do today is use this opportunity to give you an update on all of these items that I have in front of you, to have you ask any questions that you have and provide clarity as we have it and where we don't have clarity, give me some work and give other folks some work to go back and answer these questions that we can follow up on. And then I'd like to identify as we can, any high priority items. You know, everything is important, but you know, with so much going on, you know, triaging is helpful. So understanding where council's priorities are, if we can do a little bit of that as well, that would be great. I also, before I get started, I did just look real quick at HB 1650, which is the bill that would prohibit councils from banning marijuana businesses without a vote of the people. And it looks like last Friday, it was an executive session, but it didn't move out of committee. So it looks like it is unlikely to move forward without any legislative shenanigans this session. Always got a caveat. So with that being said, I'm gonna move through. Please interrupt me at any point. This can definitely be a free-flowing discussion. So the first item I have on the list here at the top is Heritage Farm. And so there was a purchase and sale agreement that recently occurred for about nine and three-quarters acres adjacent to Heritage Farm that was approved by council. And then on the 17th of October this last year, the council authorized an agreement to extend Department of Ecology funding for wetland restoration at Heritage Farm. As I understand the process as it stands right now, that is anticipated to go out for bid late this year, with construction and restoration work anticipated to begin in 2025. The next item that I have on the list here is Camp Bonneville. And so we just heard a presentation about that not too long ago. Sounds like the cleanup is nearly complete, although they still are finishing some of their site-wide groundwater review. That's kind of the last piece of that. And they've got an advisory group that is working to develop a report for the council. And that's, and so they've got an ongoing operation and maintenance plan that they are projecting to be ready in 2025. And then they can move into the master planning process for the site, anticipating that to begin in 2027 and adopting in 2029.
So I do want to pause on this and just, because we had a lot of communication back and forth with the friends of Camp Bonneville on their fire break. And so that was kind of a, I had misunderstood the status of the fire break and publicly said that, based on comments that were made over the years. But I think there's a big gap in knowledge of what DNR or other fire departments have for suppression at Camp Bonneville. And that's a concern for all of us, being so close to the Echo burn. Where can we go from here? I was hoping that we could have convened some kind of meeting with DNR and the fire teams that would be participating and any mutual response. What can we do to kind of add some detail as to what's being planned in case of a wildfire?
Kathleen, you want to take that? And then I want to add something to the cleanup piece.
Yeah, so, and Amber, I think you're on the email as well. I think Public Works is already in discussions with DNR and they also are drafting and finalizing a fire incident plan, because it's obviously, it's not a county function to fight fires. And the information I did send to council was taken from the panelists with the question, because there is no fire district or fire department assigned to Camp Bonneville. And so there is a protocol with DNR that that's then their jurisdictions. But there will be more details coming from Public Works and we can certainly add on a council time agenda to bring you up to speed.
Super.
And the only thing I would add to this, Jordan, is just to make sure we keep the language consistent on the cleanup. If we can add cleanup as defined by the body, just so that we are clear that doesn't mean the whole acreage of the whole Camp Bonneville is what was defined. So I just want to make sure we keep that language consistent as we have that out in the, as a document, a living document.
Perfect, thank you. I will make those updates to this. Anything else? Great. So then moving on to lake management, which we just were talking a little bit about in regards to the watershed and the interlocal agreement this morning. So there was an RFP released at the end of January for the Vancouver Lake Management Plan Implementation Process. Those RFP responses, I believe, are due at the end of this next week. And so they're anticipating a contract start date to begin that work May 1st. So that process, as I understand it, is all moving along. As you heard this morning, the Lackamasue Lake and Kamis Interlocal Agreement is in progress. They're making good progress on that. I have 214 work session, but that was actually today on the 7th. And so we just, we just heard about that. And so that, that seems like there will be updates as we go along and as that gets negotiated with Kamis and as their council hears about the plan as well. So then moving down to houselessness and affordable housing issues in regards to ECHO, the Ending Community Homelessness Organization Group. They are going to be spending the next little bit here reviewing the charter and the memorandum of agreement to help frame their work in 2024 and moving forward on ways that they can both hear information to bring back to council and also as a body discuss potential solutions and ways to move forward that they can then bring forward to their individual jurisdictions. Another thing that's going to be coming up into ECHO shortly is the issue that's been brought up from Community Services. Vanessa and Michael are tracking this really close and I appreciate their leadership on this issue. But because of the lower volume of real estate transactions that are going on, we are receiving less in-document recording fees, which is going to have significant impacts on our ability to fund homelessness services as that is a key source of funding. And so more to come on that, but that's an issue that we'll be pushing on as well. To give an update on the 1406 Supportive and Affordable Housing Funds. So council just a few weeks ago awarded funds for 2024 to the Recovery Hotel and to VHA's Weaver Creek Commons Facility. And so that, that funding is with Community Services. I know they're working on those contracts right now. And so it sounds like those should hopefully be able to get into place pretty quickly here, from what I've been hearing. And then generally, I just want to give an update. So for 2025, through the rest of this year, I'd like to start developing a little bit more formal RFP process for developing these funds. They've only been around for, you know, a few years now. I think it's, you know, kind of been fits and starts. It's a new program, but just because it would be nice to have a more formalized process rather than having folks just reach out to us. I think it'd be great to be able to market that and to be able to hopefully bring some folks in, in the affordable housing space that may or may not have been aware of some of the funding opportunities before. So I just want you to know that that's something that I've got my eye on and that I'll be working on as the, as the person who's the main point of contact for these funds. Moving down, this is, this is on hold, but this is an issue I think that was brought up last year and council young had been asking about this recently as well. But there is the option for the county to take up to a 0.1% sales tax for affordable housing and related services, including behavioral health facilities and treatment programs. So the City of Vancouver has already taken that tax. And so if the county did at some point decide to take this, they would have to credit 100% of the tax collected within the City of Vancouver to the City of Vancouver. You know, I know the various taxes have different sharing splits and things like that, but this is wholly to the individual jurisdictions. And so just wanted to give you an update on that. It seems like that's kind of in a holding pattern. I believe the last time that council discussed this, there was an interest in, in moving forward, but that is just a tool in our tool belt, should we ever choose to use it. Also wanted to follow up on safe parks. And so there was a council time conversation about safe parks on October 4th, talked through some of the pros and cons of the process. And I know there was a discussion about potentially a retreat with some of the City of Vancouver officials and the county to discuss some of these issues. I had a question on this. I wasn't sure what the status of those, where those conversations are. And so maybe we can talk a little bit about that. And then there was also some interest expressed in potentially having Community Services come back to talk about their work around homelessness services in relation to Safe Park and then also more generally. And Michael and Vanessa have let me know that they're welcome, or they are willing to come back anytime that council would like to have that conversation too.
I believe the discussion about with the City of Vancouver, that was actually brought back at ECHO in that venue. So, and I don't know, Amber, if you remember any.
Yes, we did bring it back and I think there was going to be ongoing dialogue, but it kind of stayed there. So something to bring, I think, back up at the next ECHO meeting to see if there's any movement on that.
Perfect. Well, I will, I'll keep that on ECHO's radar then. So thank you for that.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate, and I know Jordan said this at the beginning, if you have a different direction in what is being presented, please let us know. We want to make sure that we're doing the work that council wants us to do.
Well, with that invitation then, because I always saw these as different topics, the idea of, and I know Ken later was taking a stab at this, the idea of identifying any possible county excess property and making it available to developers, whether it's VHA or GIN or other nonprofits, Habitat for Humanity, developing affordable housing. I don't really know where that sits. I did push forward to some of those stakeholders like VHA. Hey, take a look at our GIS level, layers. Look for county-owned property. Look for something that's not being used for anything and then come ask us so we can put it on the market and tie, I'm hoping by deed restrictions, only for affordable housing. So I don't know where that sits. I haven't heard anything more from either staff or from any of the entities out in the community. But I would like to pursue that still. I don't know how many properties we have. And Ken did a good job in the last, that road vacation, showing the steps he had gone through to see if that was a possible location for affordable housing.
Yeah.
Wasn't, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we did send a link, a GIS did a Google, well, not a Google, some sort of search within their system to show and identify all county properties. That was sent to council. And then we did direct Ken that anytime he's looking at property transactions with any of our properties or others, as we're going through it, that they're looking at it through that lens of can this be used? Other than that, there hasn't been, and other than Lindsay looking at properties, there hasn't been council direction to sit down and look at our hundreds of properties to see what could be included or not.
So that would be my ask. I don't know if others agree, because I don't want to sit down and look through GIS myself and see, just figure out, well, is this quarter acre available? Is this half acre available? You know, because I won't know if Public Works or some other entity has future plans for it. It would be, I don't know how much staff time would be involved. How many properties are there? I mean, there are hundreds or are there a hundred? Are there, is there a dozen? I mean, I don't have.
There's a lot.
Yeah, I keep hearing there's a lot, but.
And I'll find the email that was sent, because I think we sent part of it in a spreadsheet and part of it was a link. So, I mean, even the public can actually go on there and look at that, but there is a significant number.
Okay, Chair. Just a little update. I had a meeting with Andy Silver, I think, last week. And we brought this up and discussed it shortly. And what he suggested is really, his suggestion was that we put out an RFP for a consultant to work with staff on locating the properties and determining whether they be useful. And he said that also could be done as part of like an internship potentially as well. The question is, you know, somebody, and I agree with this 100%, I would like this to go, to move forward. But the question is, who takes the lead on it? You know, who, who does that? You know, how do we, how do we get that? Because I also think that there's still properties that we are unaware of in our many different departments that, I mean, they have no account on the GIS and things like that. So I don't know, I don't know the mechanism to move this forward.
Well, and I understood a number of years ago that there was a concerted effort made just to inventory our capital and real estate. So I don't.
That was the spreadsheet that was included with the properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
After council, after reviews again.
Please go ahead.
After, I'm sorry, after council reviews again that spreadsheet, which I recall you having sent that to us, thank you. I would suggest that we backtrack a little bit and look at the bigger issue. Are we wanting to support additional safe parks or not in the county? And what's involved in actually supporting them? You know, in terms of services and whatnot, are we wanting to do that? Are we committed from a policy perspective to do that? So, you know, I'd like to see a decision made on that before we go into the minutia of what piece of land might be available. And, you know, kind of take its big step and then follow up with the littler follow-up.
So I, I really see these as two different issues. And we, you know, through ECHO, through our collaboration with Vancouver, how can we help? You know, one of the issues early on was, hey, we, we have the SARPA money, do you need us to help buy you pallets? The answer came back, no, we've already bought all the pallets for the foreseeable future. We have a stockpile of them. I mean, this is, the excess property to be made available to nonprofits or other public entities is a separate issue from safe parks. So I'd like to keep them separate.
Yeah, I agree. They are separate. And, you know, the question is, what can we do with it? And, you know, not just looking at Safe Park or State Station, but what can we do in terms of affordable housing in general? I mean, can housing be built on some of these small places? Can temporary structures go up that are going to be used for housing? You know, what can we do? That's, we have these properties and they're doing nothing. And we have a crisis on our hands and looking into seeing if there's a possibility that we can do something productive with these lands, even if it ends up only in eliminating land expense in the building process in, in return for guaranteed to be affordable forever. You know, something like that.
So just to carry on with this.
Sorry, it sounds like what you're suggesting is another row on this list of policy discussions. Because you're going separately from the safe parks. So whatever the issue is, let's make a row for it and highlight it for discussion.
Super. And that's what I was answering the manager on by bringing that up. So I don't want to hire a consultant if we don't need to. I'm hearing from your meeting with Andy Silver, because I had talked about this idea with him and GIN and some others, Habitat for Humanity, months ago, and they haven't come back. So I'm guessing that it's beyond their capability to search GIS and find potential sites. Is it beyond our capability that we, we get to know all the properties we own that we're, we have no plans for? I mean, if it's beyond our capability, then do we need to hire a consultant to move this forward?
Let me talk to staff, because I do think it's going to be a lot of work, because there, there is a lot. But internship might be an option that we can look at. I think some clarity on what we're reviewing the property for would be important. Is it not for, so is Safe Park going to be part of that? Okay, it's really about zoning what's allowed for affordable housing or supporting affordable housing.
So from my point of view, I mean, there's five of us. I mean, this was an epiphany to me a while back. Where are all these excess properties and why don't we make them available only for affordable housing? Let's put housing on it, wherever located. Even, and there may be legal constraints with zoning and outside the urban growth boundary. Those are additional issues we'll have to come across. But I just thought, if we have these properties that we don't intend to use, that we are not using, let's make them available. Because what I heard from these developers always, they cannot compete on the open market with other developers for prime pieces of property. So they do look for bargains. They look for properties that others aren't interested in. And so I think there's a legal mechanism that we can say, hey, we've got 50 properties, quarter acre, half an acre, an acre, and we will make it available on the open market, but only for affordable housing. Then I think it's a win-win. It's a win for the county. We put excess property to productive use. It's a win for the developers out there that are looking for these properties. It's just, what's the next step in identifying the possibilities?
I just want to make sure we've got three counselors. I know we have two here. And looking at our excess properties for specifically affordable housing, what is the current zoning? Could that zoning be changed if we're not going to use the property to account for this? Okay.
So I did see Michelle put her thumb up.
Okay.
So I think we have three.
I will bring this back on a council time once I discuss with staff about our capability and if not, you know, what, if we can partner with Wazoo or PSU actually has a really good program for government as well. So we'll take a look at that piece. For the Safe Park discussion, separate, that is on here, is that something that council wants to continue reviewing? What next steps do you want in that program, if any?
Let me hear from council, because I'm now off ECHO. What do others want to do? I mean, we've been dealing with this for years with our Community Services, looking for ways to weigh in and work in partnership with Vancouver. I don't know what else we can do at this point. I mean, we didn't find any, and we did, that was a separate search.
Yes.
For available properties. We didn't find any available properties that matched the criteria that all the stakeholders were looking for in order to have a safe park. I don't know what, so from my point of view, I'm willing to hear from other counselors, because I don't have any ideas where we can weigh in right now.
Chair Mebaji, I have a few comments. I just recently got off ECHO too. There wasn't, that was the issue with funding available to other areas in the county for safe parks and then funding available like in battleground. They didn't know how they would even fund the potential maybe property that was identified. And then there was the issue on how to get folks to those services, like was Sea Tran going to be able to partner? There just wasn't a lot of options, because there are so many rural areas out in the county, and those were the potential properties that were looked at. So as far as I know, there, there just wasn't really any options.
So my personal.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. My, my personal thoughts on the issue is that this is, you know, a safe park is something that is beneficial for the community. But I really, at this point, I, I just don't think we have the infrastructure built up here in the county to be able to facilitate this. It would take a lot of resources to do that and it'd be kind of reinventing the wheel. I think if, you know, the council was supportive of doing something of this nature, I think it would be more productive to partner with the city and have them more develop the plan, find the location. They have those resources, if they're willing, and, you know, us be kind of a funding partner of it. And of course, our citizens would be able to have, use that space.
Karen, you had a comment?
I would propose that we take this off the list of policy priorities for now. I think for the reasons that Michelle Belkot outlined and did so with the same accuracy that I've found on the topic, I think it's a good time to just move on and, and not dwell on trying to develop something that really isn't ripe for discussion and doesn't have the support within the county at this time.
And, and we'll get input from ECHO if that should change or if there's a specific point of discussion from any of the cities, including Vancouver. And I might add from RTC just last night, WASTOT did a presentation highlighting their partnership with the City of Vancouver and making WASTOT location available. And Sea Tran has as well with their One Terminal. So there are partnerships occurring. We did a search, a diligent search, and we just couldn't come up with a property that satisfied people. So I guess I would concur, it could be tabled or taken off from your active list.
Yes, we can put, we'll just note it that it's on pause and if anything comes up at ECHO or other opportunities, we'll bring it back to council.
Okay, great discussion.
Great, thank you, counselors. I will, pun intended, put that in the parking lot and replace it with a line about county excess properties as an item to continue following up with. So I'll move on here to the next item on my list, which is the Comprehensive Plan. And so SB 6150 extends the deadline for cities and counties in our planning group, six months here from June of 2025 to have the comp plan done to December of 2025. I can give you an update since when this was sent out even. This bill passed the Senate unanimously yesterday. So it sounds like that is, that is going to be moving along. And so, you know, the county has been working through the process, Oliver and staff. The VBLM has been, they've had the work session with you all completed. There is the climate change element, Public Participation Plan was approved by council and I actually will have a question for you about that during council time later this afternoon. You approved the population employment projections. And so I know that Oliver's staff is working with the individual municipalities in the county around their own land use and population housing scenarios. There is going to be an environmental impact statement that is going to be drafted. It sounds like that's going to be in early to mid. It sounds like that's going to be in early to mid portion of this year, so be on the lookout for that. The next step in the process is a preferred alternative analysis, which is going to happen in late, late this year, early next year. There will be a review session with Department of Commerce. The Planning Commission work sessions and hearings will be part of this process, and then the council will have work sessions and hearings on the comp plan through 2025. I'll also note on the legislative side of things related to this, so there was a House Bill 2113, which in its original draft required the county to submit our housing element portion of the comprehensive plan to the Department of Commerce for approval before we could do anything with it. There was a lot of opposition to that from counties. WASAC was against this. And so the current version of the bill, it's the second substitute House Bill now, 2113, now the bill is permissive. We may submit our housing element to Commerce, but we are not required to do so. And I think that bill may very well continue to change a little bit as the session goes along. We're going to keep tracking that because it will have potentially a pretty significant impact on our comprehensive planning process. So moving along, the next item on my list is a third Columbia River corridor. And so this has been included as a, as a short-range action strategy in RTC's draft regional transportation plan, and I included a link and a page number there if you ever need to reference it. And community planning is reviewing how to include this in the comprehensive plan update. We have had a member request form sent to us for transportation funding, and so we did send a letter to the Transportation Committee and our legislative delegation asking them to support funding for a visioning study related to a third corridor. The RFP for that process was drafted in 2022. From what I've been hearing, we're unlikely to receive funding from the legislature in this cycle, but we are going to continue to put it in front of them, as I've heard repeatedly from the council that this is important. We want to begin long-range planning, not just looking at now, but also what's going to be good for the county 10, 20, 50 years into the future. And so we're going to continue to pursue that as much as we can. The next item is ADUs. My understanding from, this is a holdover from last year, my understanding that mostly this conversation is, is on hold, but I would note that there are a few bills that I am following in the legislature right now related to ADUs, including, and I think we talked about this maybe a couple of weeks ago with Josh Nanica, some legislation particularly around rural development of ADUs and some changing regulations around being more permissive for ADUs in the rural parts of the county. So we will continue following along with that to see where the legislature lands on that because that could definitely have an impact on us.
So I just want to chime in on this one because this one, I think, I think councillor Young had brought this one up, and it's been on hold since, so I just want to make sure you're still good with it being on hold or.
Yeah, yeah, I think it should be on hold. There's just, there's so many changes coming from the state level that it'd be a waste of time to, to work with it right now, but I do want to keep it on there and see what, when the dust settles, if there's still more things that we might be able to do.
Thank you.
Great. And I will definitely keep paying attention to that as we go through the process. Similar, kind of on hold, as, as I understand it, related to equestrian issues in, in the county. And it sounds like, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't have a great sense of this. I don't, I don't think this has come up too much over the last year, but it, it is a holdover again. So if there are any updates, I, I'd welcome them. I, you know, as things come across my plate, I will certainly be paying attention to them or as requests come from council, but I don't have a, a ton of.
So the background on this, and I, I, as far as I know, it could come off the list. I mean, this all evolved from about five code enforcement actions that were ongoing at one point, and the equestrian community kind of blew up over it. And the outcome was there was a lot of misunderstanding or misinterpretation of what the equestrian code actually, existing code actually required. And then everything quieted down. So as far as I know, there's no ongoing effort to write code. There's no ongoing consternation with code enforcement over existing code. Most of it was manure issues. So I don't know. Is anyone hearing something differently? Because I haven't heard a word, and I've got a number of neighbors who are in the equestrian community that I heard from years ago, but haven't heard from in years.
We, I have not heard any feedback on it. I will, we can follow up with April though, just to make sure that there's no code enforcement cases that are still pending, but I think councillor Mebaji, as you summarized it, that's my understanding.
So any issue taking it off council?
No issue at all.
No issue.
Great. We will put that in the, the parking lot or maybe the corral as well. All right. So next, next issue is railroad and freight rail dependent uses. And so we have an RFP out right now for a consultant to support work around the overlay area, the FRDU overlay. And so we've received a few responses to that RFP. I am part of the committee that's reviewing those, so I know that work is, is ongoing. I think we're going to have a meeting to begin scoring some of those responses at the end of this week, and so we'll continue that process and let you know where that goes from here. And I did not check this morning, so the, the rail incentives bill that would allow for tax exemptions for improvements to the railroad, it does look like it's moving forward toward a vote in the House. And I checked last year, so last year it did, the bill did pass the House, but it died in the Senate, and so it looks like it may be on track to pass in the House again. We'll see what happens in the Senate, but this is one that I am tracking as well, as we, as we continue to look towards, towards the railroad and, and supporting those incentives and, and development of the railroad as per council's direction. The next issue on my list is related to wildfires. And so it looks like we had a fire break ordinance that was approved by council to move to a hearing earlier this year? No?
So this one is on my, my to-do list. We did present this ordinance to council. There were some questions regarding other code and just putting in language to make sure that it doesn't trump any other code that has restrictions on what they can cut down, like white oak, I think that's one. So I, my goal is to have that back in front of you within the next two weeks and then schedule for a hearing. That's all.
So my concern with this is when it said to be determined or. We're going to be right into a fire season again pretty soon, and, and this came from those in the rural orsted area, that they were asking for this, their ability to clear their own land for emergency services to come and go. So yeah, I understand the issue with, there may be some protected vegetation that we do want to continue to protect. This was not at our cost. This is to allow property owners to clear their own land. So once, I'm assuming we're going to approve this, once we do, you know, then they need to be apprised of it, react to it, and hopefully they can do what clearing they want to do before the next fire season hits us. So I'm just concerned about the timing.
We, we should be able to have a hearing because we have to do notices for hearings, but at the latest by the end of March, we can have the hearing, and we'll certainly post that so the community will know. And then if it's approved at the hearing, we can also do a press release to get that information out to the community.
The next policy item is related to Agriculture Commission and Board, and I think Amber might have a.
Yeah, I can, I've been working with councillor Marshall to bring this forward back to council for discussion. So the last piece we received was from the Public Health Legal Epidemiology Project Team. They were working on a cohort reviewing agricultural bodies throughout the state of Washington. So we received that memo in mid-December. So we've been working then to look at all of our different advisory boards to make sure that we are representing the agricultural community and not, you know, intersecting with conservation, what that would look like. So we were, we are finishing compiling that information, and that will be coming from council for discussion. I would say February or March at the latest because we're just in the final stages.
And so then the next item is related to wineries and rural event centers. And so I know that task force has been created. It sounds like applications went out, and Kathleen may have an update here.
April sent me the recommendations from the applications yesterday to approve, and she's recommending that all of them actually get put on that task force. So I can certainly share the list of them and their background information. So, but yeah, so they have been reviewed by community development, and it's just sent to me yesterday to give them the, yes, this looks good.
How many?
14. And we had different categories, winery, resident farm organization, other organizations. And I think that was it. And that was based on council's direction on the categories.
My only comment on this one is to keep it on a tight leash because, I mean, we literally had a false start on this. It's been ongoing effort for three or four years, maybe longer. I can't remember when, I think Mitch Nichols was here and driving it initially. So this is taking a long time. It's much anticipated, and it's going to be hard to balance, get the right balance out in the rural community. So just keep it on a timeline so we actually can finalize it one way or the other.
Yes. And also on the criteria, we do have multiple zones like R5, Ag 20, FR 40 that are represented on this group as well. But yes, we will bring information back.
Kathleen, as soon as this task force exists and has a meeting, what, what are they going to be doing at their first meeting? Will they be recommending that they look over code and be sure that there are no additional changes that need to be made or what?
I believe that's the direction that council asked for them to do, and I will have to go back because I do have a document that I don't have in front of me with April of what their charge is, and that was also in the press release of what we're trying and the application that they filled out. So I, if I can, let me follow up with you later just to ensure I'm not missing anything.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I might suggest, and it may be being done already, I'm not sure exactly how our communications goes, but I think this would be something that we want to make sure that we inform all the neighborhood associations on so that they can also pay attention to what's happening and, and be involved in this conversation.
You want them involved during the task force discussions or when it comes back for hearing?
Oh, so are the task force, are they going to be public meetings where people are able to come and watch?
Not submit public comments, no, not on public comment. I will have to ask April how they're going to be providing these discussions.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate finding that out.
Okay, so back to my question about neighborhood associations, because we, we have a lot of programs and we're not always sending, I mean, Merryl Lee does a great job, and we have presentations and stuff, but what, what is council's direction on that?
Well, I mean, just my initial thought is I, I mean, I, I guess I need to know what the format is going to be. I think it would be, I mean, whether there's public comment or not, I don't know, but they should be able to be aware of the discussions that are taking place so that they can provide input, not necessarily to the task force per se, although I think that would be nice, but just in general that they can provide input and feedback on what they hear discussed.
So my personal opinion is that's way premature, especially with the false start we already had. You know, once we get the recommendations from the task force, figure out what the code changes could be, then that starts the public hearing cycle, open houses. We had open houses before that evidently weren't well advertised. But I, I think it's premature at this point as we're trying to find out what code changes we, they're even asking for and in what zones. I mean, we, we still have a long way to go. And so involving neighborhood associations is, I, I just think the timing is not right yet.
Yeah, Chair Mebaji, I have, I have a comment too. Kathleen, do they have to, since this is a brand new task force, do they have to develop bylaws as well since this is, do they have bylaw requirement?
They certainly don't have bylaws yet, and the application did have the specific look. I mean, for me, it's like if they need to have some sort of bylaws or charter, it's just going to summarize what council's directed them to do. And also, and because task forces are a little bit more informal, you know, sometimes like I know with the Camp Bonneville Charter, it's really about how we're going to treat each other and be professional and respectful, even if there's differing opinions. I mean, so that would be the extent, I think, that this group would be because it is a very narrow focus.
Yeah, I, I concur with what Chair Mebaji said. This is in its infancy, so I don't think it would be, involving neighborhood associations at this point would probably be confusing.
I, I just feel like that, I mean, they're going to come up with some recommendations, but if they don't have the feel of the community, they may bring us some recommendations that are not in line with it. I, I think the earlier the involvement, the better, but I may be the only one that thinks that way.
Well, so far I think you are, but so let's move on.
All right. The next item on the list is Public Benefits Rating System, and it's too bad that councillor Marshall was not able to join us today because I think this came from her. And so there's an interest in having a work session to review what it might look like to have a public benefit rating system in the county. And Clark County, it looks like had considered creating one of these in, in 2019. Sounds like there were some work sessions back then. That was put on hold, and so I think it's sort of just outstanding as a, as a potential future work session item for council to consider during this year is, is looking at potentially creating a public benefits rating system.
The only thing I re-characterize from what you just said, because early on when we did have those work sessions and the presentation to us, the council rejected it.
Okay.
Of not moving forward. It wasn't that, oh, we're, we're just going to put it on hold. I mean, no one wanted it to move forward at the time.
Okay.
But it may be different because we have a different council now.
Yeah, I don't, that's not my recollection of what took place, but perhaps, I don't know.
Glenn, you weren't here in 2019.
Okay, but it was brought up more recently though.
I believe Chair Mebaji was referring to the, the last presentation that was done and that their council didn't agree. Councillor Marshall did bring this up to see if council would be willing to have another work session with Peter to present the information.
Just re-characterizing one small part of what.
Okay. My apologies, I didn't realize that.
And I, I have the notes on this, but did we have a thumbs up for the majority of the council to have that work session? You know what we'll do, I'll bring it back on a work session request at a council time. We'll do it that way.
Okay, so those online, think about it, and, and Sue's not here today, or at least this morning, and I know she was a, a little bit more supportive of this topic. So you'll bring it back at another time.
Jordan, is that Public Benefits Rating System, is that hyperlinked? I see it in blue on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, if you have the digital version of this, I believe you should be able to click on it, and it'll take you to the, yeah, there it is right on the screen. That was the project proposal that came forward in 2019.
Perfect, thank you. I'll go check that out.
Next item on the list is Fire Impact Fees. And so we kicked off the year with a work session on January 3rd with the council. We had a great conversation, had a number of the fire chiefs in attendance talking about their concerns related to fire impact fees. And it sounds like the council, as I recall, had agreed on the need for a, a public hearing as, as a next step, and so we'll be working on the, on the timing of that. And there was some interest in dealing potentially with some of these. And there was some interest in dealing potentially with some of these fire impact fee issues at the state level. And I can just let you know that I've been tracking a few bills related to this. And it appears that none of them are moving ahead at this point. So I don't think we're going to see, at least as far as I have been tracking so far, I don't think we're going to see much change related to fire impact fees at the state level this year.
And I can share that that hearing has been scheduled and noticed for February 27th and it's on your calendars.
Great. And so a few more here for you. So as we move into kind of this other category, one of which is broadband. I know that's important in the county and we've got some things moving along. So there is an ARPA contract with Comcast to support development for broadband northeast of Battleground Lake. And I have the last couple of months been working with Comcast to finalize negotiations on that, on that contract. And we are very, very close on language. I don't want to promise a timeline because I know this has been postponed, but we literally have like four small items to iron out. And once, once they get back about those items, I think we can get that in front of council for a final approval pretty quickly. So TBD, but I'm optimistic on that. I am poking Comcast to make sure that they get back to us here. And thanks to Steve Archer in the PA's office for being some legal support on that as well, since I am not a lawyer. And the other piece here that I just wanted to bring up that will definitely be coming up later this year is related to the BEED program, the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. That is going to be $1.2 billion. That is coming to the state of Washington from the federal government for broadband development in unserved and underserved areas. And there has been a lot of work that has gone on from our public works staff, from our GIS folks. I know Amber's been taking a big leadership role on this. To develop accurate maps of where our internet reliability is in the county. There's going to be another process this spring where individuals and institutions can challenge that again to say, hey, these maps are or aren't accurate. And once that happens, it looks like applications are going to be accepted starting this fall, anticipating that work will begin in the state in 2025. And so there will be more information to come on that, but that is, that is moving along as well. And then we've got the mental health sales tax and the public safety sales tax as the next couple of items. And so this is going to be my first full year working as kind of the main staff person on the mental health sales tax. In the last round of awards, there was, it was noted that there was a need for more technical assistance to applicants this year. And so I know that our community services folks have been working with the Community Foundation of Southwest Washington, others, around finding ways to try to provide support to applicants through the process so they can put together better and more robust and hopefully more fundable applications as we look to bring that fund balance down and get that money out into the community. And so the 2025 process will kick off in the next month or so. To begin the spring with some prep sessions, putting together the process with applications due in the fall. And then the RFP review process happening in the fall for funding into 2025. And so we'll definitely keep you up to speed on how that goes. And I know there are a couple of counselors on that committee as well. That'll be pretty deeply involved. On the public safety sales tax side, we have pretty much spent down almost the entire amount that we collected from the public safety sales tax in ongoing costs for both the body worn cameras and some additional FTE. And so it looks like, as I understand right now, there is, it's unlikely that there will be enough new funding to support additional RFP process in 2025. And so really the only further action item I have is that there may be a reconsideration of the minimum fund balance with that. That's gotten brought up a few times, but otherwise we're unlikely to do too much with the public safety sales tax, given the amount that we're going to bring in this next year.
And refresh my recollection, the legislation to allow cities to take additional amounts, is that dying or is that moving forward?
Last I checked, I don't know that I've looked at it this week, but I think it had made it to an appropriations committee, but I don't think it had been scheduled for a hearing. So it looks to me last I checked that it was likely not to move forward, but I'll double check that for you.
Going back real quick to the mental health sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
In December, we approved the budget and in that budget was money for the voucher, hotel voucher program. But we'd asked to have it presented to council before moving forward. Where's that at?
Put it on an agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Vanessa about it.
Okay.
Okay, just, we're on the final page here. So thank you for bearing with me. So the next item is the jail remodel. And so that's a big policy item that is going to be ongoing throughout the year. Where are we? Council approved moving forward with Phase 1 services for pre-design, engineering and architectural services with KMB. There was a work session held on January 10th. Just yesterday, council approved Phase 2 Amendment 1. It was a request to allocate the initial tranche of $1.7 million out of the $9.9 million that was previously allocated for the jail work center expansion that we heard about yesterday. And so the JWC bed facility pre-design is beginning. The jail design and needs report is anticipated in March. And there will also be a design amendment coming to council, it sounds like sometime in early spring. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Amber?
Thank you. You summarized it wonderfully here, what we're tracking.
Great. And then I've got rules of procedure on here. And after I put this together, that will be a separate conversation that's happening a little bit later in the retreat. So you don't have to, have to go into that too much. And then the final item on here that I've got is fireworks. And so there was a work session held about fireworks on October 18th of this last year. And Kathleen is working on scheduling a work session for council to review. And then also just the main thing to keep in mind with this is any code changes related to fireworks will not go into effect for another calendar year until after they're approved. So that's, that's kind of the main consideration there. And then the final, oh wait, Kathleen, did you have something to add on that?
The only thing I would add on the fireworks, one of the main questions I think that was being asked by council was the impact of fire districts, both financially and calls. Not all of them are sharing their data, so that's why we're a little delayed in having another work session. Plus, we lost one of our employees that was leaving the Fire Marshal's Office. But, so I just want to let you know, you know, we, we're trying to still gather that data from the local jurisdiction so that we can bring that back to council.
Is it because the data is not readily retrievable or is there some other issue?
I can't fully answer that.
Okay.
I know that there's, the 4th of July had some issues that night with regards to calls from our local jurisdiction that may also hinder some of that data.
So just for the council, it's kind of a parallel issue. If, if the council's going to further restrict fireworks within the unincorporated area. I had met with the fair director, I had met with Port of Camas, Washougol, because they had had big fireworks displays in the past historically. Had very minimal conversation, but heard pretty loudly from Fort Vancouver and the consortium that works there that none of them are interested in having future public fireworks displays, which was pretty disappointing, but very valid reasons from each of them as to why they couldn't accommodate it. So I just highlight that because if you do further restrict fireworks, there's not going to be public fireworks displays available for the community either. And I haven't seen any forward movement from Rotary, Kiwanis, any of the service organizations, anyone that wants to take it on. So anyway, it's not going to be an easy topic.
Yes, I, Chair Mevage, I've heard the same thing. The Fort Vancouver Historic Trust is no longer interested in supporting that. So then that increases participation in neighborhood fireworks. So what do, what do people expect when you get these derelicts lighting off fireworks in our neighborhoods because there's no community Independence Day celebration? That's wherein lies, in my personal opinion, the issue.
And there, I know the city of Vancouver, and I'm not sure if all the cities, they don't allow fireworks in their jurisdictions. It doesn't cover obviously all the unincorporated, but all, I can't remember. It might be all the cities that don't permit fireworks in their jurisdictions, but I'll, we'll take a look at that and bring that back.
Yeah, I think there are some cities that allows fireworks sale, so they must allow some fireworks. I think.
Washougol.
Camas does, I think.
Washougol does. Washougol does. They, you can buy them during New Year's and 4th of July in Washougol in particular. And yeah, Washougol.
And then the final item on our list today is related proclamations. I wasn't sure whether this is a better fit here or under the rules of procedure, but had heard some conversation related to potentially a word count for proclamations generally. And so welcome any discussion around that either now or during the rules of procedure or at a, at a future council time. But just wanting to make sure that we keep them concise and readable and to the point.
Yeah, and so the one we just most recently are working on for Black History Month, although I thought we were on a good timeline, and I think you did a good job of incorporating all prior input from the black community as well as their current theme and put it all together. Things beyond our control, evidently, we're not going to be able to issue that proclamation until once again, like the 20th of February, I think that stands out. That's not our fault, but it needs to go into consideration for timeliness as to how we start the process on any particular proclamation. Is there something we could do better or even earlier to make sure we have a timely proclamation process?
Yeah, Chair, I totally agree. And I'll, and I'll own that, you know, I should have started the process earlier in January. And so next year I have a, I have a calendar notification already for 2025 to, to reach out, you know, the first week of January. And I've also started looking ahead to some of the proclamations that we've issued in past years to try to be a little bit more on top of that. So I have, I do have a plan for that moving forward. I also did have a chance, I was going to bring this up at council time, but since we're talking about it, I had a chance to talk to Yolanda, the president of the NAACP here in Vancouver yesterday. We were able to connect on the phone. Counselor Bowerman, she says hi as well. And she unfortunately wasn't able to make it yesterday with, with work obligations. And evenings are better for her anyway, so that is why the, because we don't have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, the following 6:00 PM session on the 20th was, was the earliest. But, but she is excited to join us for, for that and accept. So there, we're grateful that they're, they're going to join us for that.
And she was fine with the proclamation as written.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So I don't think we really answered your question, but I mean, have we, is this, is this a real, I haven't seen a real significant problem, but am I unaware of something that's taken place in the past that we had like an excessively long proclamation?
You mean physical length?
Well, I mean, we're talking about 350 words is what he's asking about.
So the answer is yes, we have had proclamations given to us that were excessively long and had to be really whittled down. I mean, somewhat in the same vein that letters to the editor are limited by most papers. So there have been examples. I wouldn't say it's the norm. I'd say most are pretty brief and, and to the point.
I think we'd also talked about, I think Chair Bowerman at that point had brought this up, that when you guys are presenting those, it's very challenging if it's a long one to get that all out to the public as well when you're, when you're doing the presentation. I think we had talked about that last year in one of the proclamations.
Yes, there, there was a lengthy one, Counselor Young. The one that I actually personally worked on, Peace Officers, it was a little lengthy, so I had some editing assistance, but yeah, it was, I was still new. I'm going to pull the new card. I'm going to pull it for Jordan too.
So I, I mean, if there, if there is an issue with that, then let's look at it. But I would be curious, like, you know, 350 words, I don't know what that is, to be honest. So I don't know what our average length is.
And maybe instead of 350 words, we fit it on one page. Does that work?
Well, what size font?
As long as you didn't make the font, right.
Yeah, we'll not make it like five font. We'll keep it readable. Okay, we'll do that. And I just want to take this opportunity before we go on to the next topic. I just want to say how much I appreciate Jordan and he has been a wonderful addition to our staff, both for work and just making policy fun and just a real joy to work with. And so I just wanted to say thank you to him.
I was going to echo that. You beat me to the point. But I also want to say congratulations on a great hire. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Michelle had both thumbs up. Yeah, echo, great job so far. And we continue to expect more great. Thanks for the work you're doing. All right, so are we done for this morning?
No.
No?
But I mean, certainly if council wants to take a break, we have, we have two more items. One is Oliver will be presenting the Community Planning Annual Work Plan. And because most of his work is policy driven and just to get feedback in from council. And then the rules of procedure, and like I said, today, we're not talking about language per se. We're talking about the topics and if council wants, and then I can bring back suggested language later. So it's not going to be a lengthy, hopefully, language part, but the overall themes and topics. And then we're done.
All right, so council, it's 20 after 11. Do you want a five minute break before we continue on?
Five minutes. Yes, five minutes.
All right, five minutes. So we'll be in recess for five minutes, recording again. All right, and there's Karen as well. We have everyone back. And I, I don't think we're going to have Sue Marshall until maybe this afternoon. We'll, anyway, let's go ahead and continue on with the agenda. So is Oliver online or?
Yes. So Kristen just pulled up Oliver's draft work program for 2024. And Oliver, I can see that you're logged on. Do you want to go over this with council?
Yes, thank you. And good morning, councilors.
Good morning, Oliver. Go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you, thank you, Sheehan, thank you.
We are having a problem with the audio. Hold on a second.
Go ahead, Oliver. Try it again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we're hearing you better. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, councilors, Kathleen. Historically, and we, that means, community planning is one of the departments, is not only one, among all the departments that council approves our work program. And this is our work program for 2024. And this is our work program for 2024. In addition to us focusing on a plan update, which we are required to complete and submit to the state. If I may, majority of what you see here, some of them are administrative, but they are also mandated, when I say mandated, they are required by state statute that we do the work on an annual basis. And sometimes it rolls over into the following year because often we are doing monitoring and updating what we need to do. For example, our shoreline master program, we do often do what we call limited amendments to that. And you can see the RCWU 3670A, 480, and also RCWU 91.58. So that is mandated that we do that on an annual basis. Similarly, when the state requires that we update our shoreline master program, in some cases we go after grant. And if we do receive the grant, we may do limited amendment to our shoreline master program. And we are continuing to monitor that to see how effective our shoreline master program is functioning based on the permits that have been issued. So we are collecting data or we are required to collect data and monitor how effective our program is in protecting the shorelines of the state. Stop me at any time that you have any questions. So regardless of whether we are doing the comp plan or whatever the council asks us to do, these are some programs and policy things that we are required to, to continue to, to, to come, to accomplish for the county. Our vacant lands model is one which we use to estimate what vacant and underutilized land is available for development. And we work in conjunction with the county GRS staff to do this work. The model is not ours in community planning, but it is ours in, in GRS. And they are the one that maintains and runs the program. The benefit of this is that we also use it in monitoring what land has been absorbed, if I may use the term, on an annual basis. And this is done when the assessors do their, what we call the assessors rollover. Every year the, the assessors do that, and then we use the data to run the model so that it, it is more accurate to reflect what the assessors data is telling us about, things that are developing in the county and how they assessing all the properties and what value are they assessing to that so that we can then be able to determine using whatever variables that is in their data to ascertain what we are defining as vacant, available to develop or underutilized, those type of issues. That's what the vacant buildable lands model assess, helps us to assess. We also are required to be monitoring that so that you often hear us saying we are working on the buildable lands report. This is required by state law, section 215 of the Growth Management Act, requires Clark County and all the cities in our county to report back to the state on how well our comprehensive plan is functioning and whether the goals and aspirations, whether it's density, how well are we meeting those targets? That's what that plant monitoring report gets you. On demographic and population and permit data, this is also tied back to the buildable lands work and monitoring. We do coordinate our work with the county designated demographer. And we prepare data to, which we send back to OFM to help in preparation of the April 1 annual population report that the state reports on annual, every April 1 of every creepy year. So we provide the data to, to OFM to help them give us a forecast or estimate of county population every April 1. They publish that in June, of course, but that's what that line item is. Development agreements, I'm just gonna run through this quickly. Development agreement, the council approved a development agreement, which we do receive from the development community in the past. We didn't have that as well, haphazardly. Sometimes the council will receive development agreement. Sometimes it will go to the PA's office, sometimes it will come to my shop. So we then prepare the development agreement that is now codified in Title 40. So we are using that as a mechanism to monitor and bring other department, Public Works, PA's Office, Community Development, and my shop to review that when we receive that development agreement and then send it. The way that the code is written is that we have to send it preliminary assessment of the development agreement, send that up to the county manager, who will then present it to the council to determine whether we should proceed to enter into development agreement on any particular project. So that's what that item is on the special planning project. This often comes from direction from council. We have used this in the past to do subarea plans, looking more closely to neighborhood and working with them to develop a plan at a local level that fits what they would like to see. We've done this, for example, in the Highway 99, Esauville area. We did a subarea plan for Highway 99, which some folks still said we have to continue to work to improve that subarea plan. But that's what that item is there for. I know this year the council suspended the annual reviews. When it's not suspended, we do get sometimes 10, 5, depending on how many we receive in a year plus whatever the council asks us to do. This is a request where property owners makes a request to change their zoning from, or their comp plan designation from one land you start to the others. Council, you, you receive this sometime in the fall of every year, after you've gone through the planning commission and you, you make the final decision. We don't, so that's the annual review process. We do, again, this is, that is required by law that the plan is not resting in stone or we have to provide opportunity for property owners to, from time to time, to make a request to amend the comp plan designation for whatever base use they feel. But we review that through the legislative process, planning commission, and then coming back to council for approval. The Arturo Atlas Amendment, the Arturo Atlas is the, I usually call it putting a line on the map, but it is done to support the land use that the council have approved. And this comes from, sometimes from the property owners and sometimes from Public Works, requesting that we do a thorough review of some of the future roads that we have planned for, where it is no longer necessary, either because of environmental constraints or for whatever reason, we may review that and make recommendation that again comes back to the council. Some of this, you can see councilors interwoven with what my transportation, transportation planning staff under my department, what they do. So all of this list here, majority of this is from our transportation planning staff approval also by Public Works and the road fund base to support the transportation planning staff. The bicycle and pedestrian, we have a bicycle and pedestrian committee, which is also one that now is under my shop. They do meet regularly to, you know, work on safe route to school and providing feedback to Public Works, whether it is in siphoning some street to allow for bicycle or pedestrian opportunities. And that is what that committee does. We are often come to you, working with Public Works staff on the cabrio facilities plan update and the cabrio improvement program. You, this comes to you often, you adopt that before approval of the budget. And the same is true for any comprehend, this year the transportation planning staff will focus on the requirement through the climate bill that we find ways to set greenhouse emission reduction and then vehicle ride travel. This is going to be a major lift, but my transportation planning staff are up to, up to it. And we are going to be following the commerce guideline to, to do the work. Currently, they are providing us baseline information in terms of greenhouse emission and vehicle ride travel. All that work is being done behind the scenes. So they're gonna use that in working with the committee, the climate committee and other committees with the help and coordination with public health to move that bill forward to see how we write a housing element. Majority of the work is going to focus on transportation component, with some help from RTC, particularly on the greenhouse reduction. I mentioned development agreements here again. Public Works staff is also involved in reviewing that, so that's why you see twice. The council have given us the green light with the approval of 100,000 to pursue implementation of the freight rail dependent use. We've received two proposals, which I believe Jordan did mention. I, we recruited him to review, assist us in reviewing the consultant that have submitted or responded to the RFP. So there's going to be a huge transportation component in reviewing that as it relates to the railroad. So that's why that is on the, I believe the last thing there, in addition to what the council have approved or continue to have, transportation staff, they mentioned, they've come to you in a work session about the transportation system plan, which I believe the council, through the work session, have asked that it be forwarded in as part of the plan update. So you will see that work as we continue to work on the, on the plan update. Intergovernmental coordination, transportation staff work with local jurisdiction. We go to RTC meeting, we walk behind the, out there on what we call RTAC. And we also buy a station, and I think it was, I don't know if the council approved that or it's, I think, I believe it's the county manager. We have staff and I am also an alternate. We do go to RTAC at Metro on issues where we make sure that we are the table to continue to fight for my county position. So Gary Albright in my transportation staff is the designee and I'm on the alternate. Occasionally I join in on their meeting just on issues that we believe the county should have. Next slide. Is that it? This may be transportation, all transportation. Can you scroll down more? I have not gone into land use, this is all transportation. I hope you have every, can you scroll down more? Don't know if I have anything more to add. Councilors, but this is the transportation side of what we do. I'm sure you may also have received the land use portion of what we do because in my shop, we are doing both land use and transportation. So I will stop there and see if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Oliver. Do we, Karen, I see your mics on. Did you have a question or comment for community?
No, I think we need to move through this more quickly.
I, I have one question.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, cause Chair Mevage, you and I were at the RTC last night. Oliver, I, I see related to, was it transfer, I was making notes while you were talking, transportation item number six, when you're saying prioritizing different projects. So I'm looking at the Clark County Regional Transportation Plan as developed by RTC. We got a copy of those last night. So are these the projects that are mentioned for the county in the RTP from RTC? Sorry for using all the acronyms. Are they being included in the, in the comp plan?
I will answer that, yes. However, what happens is that we do our planning in, in, in coordination with RTC so that at the end of the day, they will review the county plan. And there is a requirement that they give thumbs up. So yes, it is included.
Okay, and is that agreed upon between RTC and the county? Or is the county the, the la, has the last word? How does that work, since I'm still newer?
Yeah, the county will have the last word on the land use and transportation. All RTC does is review that and make sure that it aligns with all the other projects that is on their home plate as well. For example, any regional materials and any other major local materials, we're gonna make sure that that is also included. So they have to review it and give thumbs up that our plan is consistent with whatever their own program is and how it aligns with major materials or project in the county. As I said, they do the same thing for the other local jurisdictions. So everything has to be lined up or consistent with their own transportation plans.
Okay, is there something on there that would indicate that RTC has like a cross-reference type something? Cause like I'm looking at the project list for RTP, the six year, and they're saying regional, local. Is there something that is on there on the list that would identify?
I think in the, the last, where we have the local intergovernmental coordination, we can add that to, just to make sure that that includes the review of our land use plan and transportation. And RTC giving some thumbs up that it is consistent with other regional transportation projects.
That would be great, thank you. That was my only comment.
Okay, thank you, council.
Let me follow up with that. Most of the conversation last night, Oliver, I think there was some misunderstanding. And it focused on, on the six year plan, what's fully funded, what's not, and how that jives with state priorities. You know, we, my perception is that between our community planning, Public Works, and RTC, we have a, a really good relationship and we do really well with grants through RTC on our projects. So particularly the mayor of Vancouver had a lot of question about what was fully funded and what wasn't for Clark County's six year plan. You know, we, we did have a symposium, we had all the counties present very briefly their transportation plans. And then last night, the same presentation was done in a little bit more detail. But, but there was just, I think, some general misunderstanding of what those priority lists were and whether there was a differentiation between what the county had funded or was fully funded through all the revenue sources. I may be mischaracterizing that, Michelle, but, but that was the bulk of the questions I, I saw discussed about Clark County's, uh, transportation plan.
That, that's clear, Chair Mevage, yeah, that's a good evaluation, I concur.
Yes, and as I mentioned earlier, the county through the transportation improvement program, you do approve the six year transportation improvement program. And in that, Public Works staff do provide you projects that they're working on, those that are fully funded and the sources for funding, some of them is the road fund, some of them is through grants, and some of the funding is through the traffic impact fee. That you approved every November before the approval. every November before the approval of the county budget. So you do approve our transportation six-year improvement program and capital improvement program as well, just like you do for parts and stormwater. So yes, that is included in when you approve the GIP and the CIP.
Other comments or questions for Oliver? Okay, thank you. Yes, Kathleen?
My question, Chair, is, does council want to give a thumbs up of approving the work plan today, or do you need a week to digest this information and bring it back on to council time?
I'm not seeing, is Karen still on? I don't see her.
Yeah.
Okay, she is.
I'm here.
So do you want to, do you want to go ahead? Go ahead.
As far as approving the work plan, what, what specifically are you referring to? This whole document?
This is what we are going to. Go ahead, Kathleen.
No, that is correct, councillor Barman. It is what their priorities are and what they're going to be doing in 2024. So yes, it's the program in its entirety of this document.
Are, are you ready for a thumbs up, or do you wish to put the decision off for a bit?
And I will say, this is a normal protocol. It's been a little loose over COVID, so we're just getting back because it is policy driven.
Glenn, do you have thoughts?
I hate to slow the process down, but I wouldn't mind waiting a week, because I'm not sure, maybe we can look at Oliver's equipment, but I got about 10% of that presentation. I just audibly, I could not hear it.
Okay, so if we could put the decision off?
Yes, well, I'll bring it back on to council time, probably not next week, but the following week for your consideration.
Yeah, so let's, we'll put it off, focus on what the priorities are, if they're, they match your priorities, and if there are any changes we want to present. Okay, so we're also running into, I think, a time crunch here. Going, we have one more presentation, then we have lunchtime, and, but we have so many more topics.
So we have one more topic, which is rules of procedure, and again, it's just the topics, not talking necessarily about specific language, just getting, and that's all that you have for today. And then I will say council time is light today intentionally, because I know you guys are in meetings all week. So I think we only have a work session request, and then policy and council reports, and an executive session.
Okay, so I just, what I'm anticipating is we may spend more than 10 minutes on some of these, especially on public participation. I think that's going to be a big topic for discussion.
I would think so. An option that I'm asking, Leslie, is if council wants a break now, do you want to add maybe this, amend the agenda for council time and add this at that time as well? Especially if there's going to be.
How does that sound to council? Because I, I do want to, I mean, we got quite a bit of input from different organizations on what they would like to see different on public comment, and I really want to spend a necessary amount of time to address that. Go ahead.
Just like, what I would suggest is, because it was noticed as part of the retreat, is you can certainly go ahead and take your lunch break, but when you come back, we could reconvene.
True.
All right, well, let's do this. I may be wrong, maybe this will be very brief. So is there a presentation that?
So what I can do is, the topics, Kristen, if you can bring those up, I can just actually, if you would like, facilitate the different topics, and I can get a yes or no that we like this, and maybe just that, the public comment one, maybe that will take longer, but the other ones.
Let's see how far we can go. Please, go ahead.
Of course. All right, so these are topics for the rules of procedure that I've heard from individual councillors. I'm actually going to skip the first one, because I think that has the public comment on there, and start with item number two. And this is regarding councillor meetings and correspondence outside of your regular meetings, like Tuesday and Wednesday meetings. The first topic under that is there was a request for minutes and a recording of meetings outside of the councillor regular Tuesday and Wednesday meetings. So any other meetings, like the legislative meeting that you do, work sessions, and other discussions, is that something that council is supportive of? And like I said, and if so, if I have a majority, then I will go back and write draft language.
So whoever's advocating for this, speak up now.
No, it'd be me. You know, just, I, I tried to look back, because I, I wanted to hear some information from our previous legislative updates, and I looked around and I couldn't find it anywhere. And so my thought is that when we're meeting as a corm, and we are making decisions during that meeting, that people should have a resource to go back to that at a bare minimum, at least minutes. But I still think that a recording would be helpful for people to have.
And Kathleen, are there costs associated with this?
Staff time, yes.
How significant?
Writing minutes. We have a full-time person who does that now for our other councillor minutes, and we actually share that, and it's, it's, it takes time.
What about video?
We'll have to have staff time there to start the meeting and the recording and add that and save it, so.
And so is that significant, or just minor?
I think it's staff time that will be significant.
I mean, are we talking hours here, or 15 minutes?
Well, right now, there's weekly meetings, so that is going to take time. If you, you know, there's a lot of discussions. I take my own notes at those meetings, but if we're going to have to do minutes every week, that's another meeting that, you know, we do, because we do it for ECHO, we do it for council meetings, we do it for law and justice. I mean, it's, so it's, it's, it's staff time.
Yeah, so, I mean.
We're more than half, I'll.
If, if, if it's more efficient just to post the video, then I would be supportive of that, just, and to me, that video is more helpful anyway. The minutes don't really capture very well what happens, but.
Any other councillors support this change?
Chair, I just have a comment. We're not really making decisions other than to support potential legislation that might die. I mean, we're just discussing, I mean, we don't make the ultimate decision, we're just saying, yes, we support this, or no, that we don't, but we're not the ultimate decision makers. And I, like Kathleen, I make my own notes too, but then, it doesn't really, sometimes it doesn't really matter, because the bills just die whether we like it or not, so I don't think there's really a reason to capture it, because legislative page captures it. You can go watch the bill of videos, your legislators, your senators. That's just my personal opinion.
I concur with what you just said, Michelle, and for that reason, I think this is a bit of overkill for us to have on hand. It's in the category.
Thank you.
Too much.
Thank, thank you. So Kathleen, we don't see the support, so what's next?
Thank you. The next one is regarding councillors attending meetings, such as neighbourhood meetings that are outside of their councillor district.
So the same question about recording and videotaping it, is that what?
No, I believe it's the attendance outside of their district.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Where, like, one councillor might be going to a neighbourhood meeting that's within their district, and then another councillor attends as well. And I believe there's been some confusion and feedback from some of the community members who were in attendance.
Okay, so comments? Go ahead, Karen. Karen, did you have a comment?
Yes, I said, I think that should be discussed.
Okay, go ahead. Let's discuss it.
Well, I don't, are for good, now, or if we're saying, let's put a check beside it and have it come up later. Which, what are we doing?
Yeah, the thing that would be helpful is if we want to restrict or put any parameters around this, because this is not in your rules of procedure. What is that? So if it's, it's okay, then as is, we don't do anything, or if we want to restrict it, I'd need to know what council is thinking if you want something in there, so I can draft the language and bring it back.
So you need content.
So I think the.
Yeah.
I think the, the only thing really that's needed is just to ensure that we don't have a corm at a meeting. I don't think we've had a problem with that at the neighbourhood, any neighbourhood of meetings.
I have had constituents very confused about who their councillor is, because of another, councillor Young, you showed up to a couple of my district neighbourhood association meetings. I think there's two or three neighbourhood associations that actually are divided between three districts. So, you know, there could be potentially a corm issue with those, but they're not very many. But I have had constituents very confused when two of us show up and it's in my district. I got elected by my constituents in District Two. I'd like to know what's going on in District Two and assist them for any potential issues.
And therefore, councillor is going to join your District Two meetings or any other district that we're talking about. I think information should be given to you and Kathleen or staff in advance, so that you are in charge at the meeting, and if, if that individual comes, you could introduce them, if you wish, as someone outside of the district who is here just for attendance today, or whatever. But you're, you're in charge, you know? It's known that you are the representative there.
Yes, I like, I like that suggestion, councillor Barman.
I, I guess I don't follow the in charge, because we are not in charge of the neighbourhood meetings, it's the neighbourhood leadership that are in charge of those. But, you know, I'm happy to, I always enter, if I am asked to introduce myself, I always introduce myself as the District One representative. So I, I, I don't see the value to the public in moving forward with anything like this.
Well, I'm sorry, Glenn, but I do, because having multiple councillors from multiple districts attending certain meetings that are intended for a particular district is confusing to people. And so just to keep it clean, and I'm sorry, I know that, that the councillor is not in charge, I certainly misspoke, but they should be the person, in my opinion, who is overseeing the introduction of who is in attendance as a councillor from outside of that, their own district there.
So I'm, I'm supportive of taking a stab at couching a rule perhaps on the protocol on someone attending a meeting outside of their district. I think at least that's what I'm gathering from the two comments that were just made. So I would support that as well. Obviously, these are public meetings, we can't prohibit a councillor from attending other meetings, and the corm issue, as you said, is really kind of the bright line, okay, well, this is where we really do get involved with state law, if we do have more than two councillors attend. So three thumbs up for taking a stab at drawing some kind of rule around this.
And I assume the rule would be similar to what we've asked informally of council to let Kristen, or I know if you're going to be attending something, so that we can make sure there's not a corm.
Well, yes, and I would add that the councillor whose district it is, that they be informed, whether it be by staff or by the attending councillor.
So we've barely started into this list of items, and it is noon. Here's what I propose, because there are some procedural requirements for our council time to start at one, because it's already been noticed. What I suggest is we break from this meeting now, have our lunch break, come back at one for council time, and hopefully we'll get through council time quickly, so that we could then resume this meeting. Does that work, Leslie, or not?
What I was going to suggest is that perhaps we go ahead and maybe end the retreat, and we can add this, most of this to council time next week. I wouldn't suggest amending council time today. The reason is, is that, you know, some folks may just be attending the retreat and not understanding that, or.
Okay, so you're basically saying, let's continue it, put it on an agenda for council time next week to conclude this work from our retreat.
That's my suggestion.
And it'll probably be two weeks, because I don't think you're here next Wednesday, so I would like to make sure that we have at least four.
Okay, so I, I am on vacation, off and on, over the next couple of weeks, which is why I told you about those railroad meetings with, I think it was the Sierra Club. Is it okay, council? Otherwise, we'll lose our break here. Yes, go ahead, Leslie.
What we could do is you can say that we are taking a pause on this, on the retreat, that we are going to council time at one o'clock, and then at the beginning of council time, I would just perhaps say, you know, we've taken a pause from our retreat to do the notice time for council time. Once this is done, we will reconvene for the retreat and do it that way.
So that's what I was proposing, but on further thought, that's okay, that we do that, as long as council, is that okay with you? So we'll take our lunch break, come back at council time, we'll recess from this, because I think we have a lot more discussion here on these, on this list. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, not hearing any objection, let's go ahead and do that. We'll break for our lunch break from this retreat, we'll resume at one with our council time, and will make, remind me to make a further announcement that we'll be continuing the retreat as soon as we conclude council time. All right, with that, we'll be adjourned, or adjourned until one.